I got to read this little thing here. We're going to open the Board of Selectments meeting for April 9th. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We have an appointment with CMR PC at 7:15. Hopefully, Thomas is here by then. And we have... Are these all the minutes for approval, Mary?
They're the ones that I have so far. I don't have any for last Thursday.
Okay. So we have for approval, March 26th, open session, all three. I don't know if you want to wait on that, or... I mean, we-
We can approve it, too.
Yeah. April 2nd, open session was Tom and Chris, so we'll have to wait on that one. And then the other two are to be prepared. So we really just have March 26th, open session. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Did you have any comments, questions, issues? Okay. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We'll wait till either Tom is here this meeting or next meeting, April 2nd. Refunds?
None.
Oh, none. Okay, this is the bill's schedules, or the bill... Schedule of bills. All right, bill's schedules, Admin Secretary reimbursement for the workshop for 8456. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Anything else to be said?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Now is this you who signs this one?
It's probably two signatures, at least, right?
Uh, it is, yep.
Okay.
Please.
So do you want both of us to sign?
Yes, and then on the second page, one person.
Okay. And we have a 2017 Mabel Marl- Mabel Marble Scholarship Payment Approval for Cassidy, Lillian Walsh, the amount $1,000. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Anything to be said?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Make sure we sign these this time. Just the one page?
Just that, yep, just the page.
Okay. All right, we got a head start for yous.
Well, good. Yes, sorry, I had a late call from the office.
That's okay. We just finished number three.
All right.
So...
Unless you want to circle back to the other seven minutes?
Oh, unless you want to go back to the minutes that you and I were here by ourselves on April 2nd.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve.
All right, second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right.
I'm going to need an agenda here somewhere.
Isn't that it?
Yes, it's mine.
That's okay. I always mess it up myself, so don't worry about it.
I'll leave that, I'll share with you.
There it is.
Ah, there it is.
How are you?
Terrific, sir.
Before we... Because we're going to have a 7:15 meeting, before we do, is there anybody who has anything?
I just have a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
I did provide a little note there, and I know it was sent to you, um, email.
Yes.
Also with the attachment to tell you where the actual judicial record is.
Yes.
You should have that. One of the things I was hoping that that would be helpful in the case that we put together for the hearing, at least the knowledge of the council, that something like that did take place at the Supreme Judicial Court. The other question I have real quickly were, do we have a time and place yet?
Uh, no, we know this is the 30th, but we don't, still don't know where and when. But I, you know, I, as I said, I would undertake to let you know positively when I, as soon as I know that.
And if the public could attend, you would-
And if the public can attend, yes.
And then, I don't know the strategy, and I don't know if it's appropriate question, if it's not, just tell me it's not appropriate, but I'm hoping that we plan to take this all the way that we need to, to win. In other words, if we need to appeal the hearing, it hasn't happened yet, but if we need to, I don't know if we're prepared to do that or not. And I don't know how to even ask that question.
No, no, you know, and obviously, we'll make decisions and assess things as we go along with advice of counsel. But I think I speak for everybody in which we feel that, you know, that 40B doesn't have affordable housing benefits that are commensurate with the local interests that are being compromised as a result of that. And I think there is a pretty good consensus to go forward with that, as long as council support suggests that that is worthwhile.
Yeah.
Okay? Is that understandable?
It is, sir.
Okay.
I understood everything you said.
Yeah. Sometimes when lawyers start speaking, it isn't, but anyway, I'm trying to speak as a selectman and not as a lawyer.
No, you did well, for me.
On this one, I would say that I did, I actually was aware of it before you passed it along, and I had taken a scan-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine. I had taken-
You might not be next time.
I might be not, no, absolutely. And I did take a scan of it, and I do think that while not absolutely determinative, it is a positive, you know, really quite a positive development, that the Supreme Judicial Court would weigh things and come out in the way that they did.
And, yes, that's good. I'll just go from here then.
Yeah.
Thanks for taking my-
Oh, no, no, nope, no problem at all. We appreciate-
No, but I appreciate-
We appreciate you sending it along and all of that, you know, that-
No, but, you know, I don't really know what goes on, so when I find something-
Sometimes I don't know either, so it's good to let us know.
No, but I trust you, no, but I pass it on my toe, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like we can get a start. This is a meeting at CMR PC, and the purpose is to receive a report and to make a vote to update our hazard mitigation plan. Is that correct?
It is.
All right, come on. I'm Tom Andrews.
Tom, I'm Andrew Lowe.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Okay. My name is Andrew Lowe. I'm here from the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. I'm actually here representing my colleague, Adam Menard, who's been working with the town over the last several months on this project. He is actually finishing up his master's degree tonight, so he was unable to be here.
Well, that's a good excuse.
Seems worthwhile.
Yeah, yeah.
So, again, this project is the town's natural hazard mitigation plan. Berlin has participated in the past in a regional mitigation plan that was completed about five years ago, and it's expiring this year. And in coordination with the Mass Emergency Management Agency and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, which is funding this project, they recommended that we pursue single-town plans for the next round of plans. These plans are, are good for five years.
Why is that?
Well, it's a more detailed document that's customized better for each community than the regional plan was, which had a relatively small amount of content for each community. So we agreed that this was a better approach to take, and that's what Adam's been pursuing with the town officials over the last several months. I believe the first meeting was last June. Adam was here in November to discuss the draft version of this plan. And the draft plan, when it was completed, was submitted to MEMA for review in December. MEMA completed their review. I believe there were some small revisions. Then it was forwarded along to FEMA, which is, again, the funding agency and the approving agency for this plan. FEMA issued its approval in March, and I'm here tonight to ask the board for its approval to adopt the plan locally. Again, this is an update of an existing plan. It'll be good for five years going forward, assuming it's adopted here. So just, I'll go through this really quickly. I have a handout here for folks who are here in the audience that I'm basically following for the presentation. And I'll go through this very quickly, because I think you've heard much of this before. So, what is hazard mitigation? It's not disaster response. It's essentially actions that we can take before natural disasters occur to lessen the impact of those disasters when they do occur. And it helps to break the cycle of damage, reconstruction, rebuild, damage. We want to kind of short-circuit that cycle. Why should the town complete and adopt this plan? So the plan establishes a roadmap. It has value as a technical document, as a planning document. Another reason that it's worthwhile is that adoption of this plan allows the town to access a pool of FEMA funding that you would not otherwise be able to access. There are three grant programs that you'll be able to access, or continue to access, having this plan in place. One of those is the Pre-Disaster Mitigation Program, which is an annual grant program that you can apply for. And then two of the other programs, you can only apply for after there's a federally declared disaster. And this plan is at no cost to the town, in terms of cash. There was a match of town staff and of board and commission members as well. So what national hazards pose the greatest risks to Berlin? According to the planning process to date, the largest risks here were considered to be winter storms, along with severe thunderstorms and windstorms, and then a more secondary risk was the flooding from the Asbit River in Northbrook. Middle-tier risks, again, were also hurricanes and tropical storms. And then there are some hazards that do occur occasionally here, but are either very infrequent or were not terribly damaging when they occur, tornadoes, dam failure, extreme temperatures, droughts, earthquakes, landslides, and wildfires. So this, a lot of this information was compiled by Adam and our team at CMR PC from various data sources that we have access to, but a lot of what goes into this plan is really local knowledge that comes from folks here in town. So I believe Mary has played a large role in this, as well as Chief Zbikowski. Is that you?
Yes.
Again, I'm filling in for Adam here, so good to see you here. And there's some other folks here listed, two participated from the police, from the board here, the Highway Department, and accounting. So there has been a lot of local input into the plan. Again, just to go quickly through the timeline here, this started about last June. There was a public survey last fall that went out to try to get some input from residents as to hazards that they're concerned with, things that they would like to see. There were about two dozen responses to that, and that helped feed into some of the strategies in the plan. There was a public event here a few weeks ago, or several weeks ago now, in November. I'm here tonight as the second public event to ask the board to adopt the plan, and as I mentioned, this is good for five years, once it's adopted, and it gives you that continued eligibility for FEMA funding. So there's about, bullet point list here of a page and a half of strategies that were identified in the plan. And I should say, the plan itself is, with appendices, is close to 200 pages long, so this is a-
Right.
Very condensed summary here, and I'm not going to go through all of these in the interest of time. And the full plan is available on CMR PC's website, so if anybody here or at home is interested, please do take a look at the plan online. But just to highlight a few of these strategies that Adam felt were important, in the category of structure and infrastructure projects, one item was to dredge the fire ponds. So I'm sure you're all aware, I'm not sure everyone at home is, but there's no municipal water service here, so all of the firefighting infrastructure is essentially things like dry hydrants and cisterns. And some of those ponds gradually fill up with debris and sediment and become less effective as water sources for firefighting. So dredging those is a, is an important activity. Adam also wanted me to highlight that the town would like to purchase a utility vehicle for helping monitor forest areas, again, with the interest of fire control. And another item under this category was to maintain snow fences. So you've got roads in town that have a history of snow blowing over the road during winter storms that helps, you know, it hinders road conditions and visibility. Barton-Sill Road, Linden Street, Mendon Street were among those here.
I think that those-
It was Barnes Hill.
Barnes Hill.
Yeah, Linden.
Barn-
And, uh-
Barnes Hill?
Yeah.
Is it Sawyer Hill or Brew Road? Because that's the other place that they put them.
Yeah, so you've got the streets mixed up.
Okay. Didn't see you sneak in there, Chief Cal. Yeah.
Okay.
Because I was just the other people, you know.
Yeah. All right, good, okay.
Sorry, didn't see you there.
Don't blow his cover.
There we go.
Okay. So I'll coordinate with Adam to get in touch with you folks to make the corrections needed. Okay. All right. The next category here is Preparedness, Coordination, and Response Action Strategies. So this is more things that, generally speaking, your emergency services can do to try to get prepared for some of these hazards, more specifically. And one item here that Adam pointed out was that while you do have an effective hazard warning system here in town, there's interest in utilizing it to a greater degree to sort of maximize your emergency communications, both internally and with the public, in the event of a hazard situation. Under education and awareness programs, which are often your most cost-effective form of mitigation, relatively inexpensive, to create an education program that would reach out to residents about some of the hazards that are more frequent and more risky here in town, and also to help with water conservation, you know, as the climate may be changing and more droughts coming up, that's something that, especially here in a community where everybody's relying on private wells, conservation can be an important factor. Then the last category here, local planning and regulations. One thing that was highlighted during the planning process was to study the possibility of creating a regional shelter with one or more neighboring towns, so that would help limit the town's expense of maintaining separate shelters with a limited budget. It could also give you access to perhaps a more robust sheltering capacity. So, again, those are just the highlights here.
Great.
Full plan is online. I'm happy to speak to the plan, especially in the process, because I haven't, wasn't involved with the content of the plan, but I am familiar with the process of how this gets approved. So I'm happy to take any questions, or if anyone who was involved with the planning process would like to say anything, you know, I'm happy to open it up.
Well, I'd invite anybody who was part of the project to say something, if they like.
There's, I mean, we've already answered this, yeah.
We expedited it. We met a couple of times, got the information back, and they were great about getting the information compiled, and-
Yeah, it went very smoothly.
And having something mentioned here, I take it is a leg up if we were seeking state monies or grants?
Yeah, I mean, the main advantage that you have here is seeking those FEMA funds, but it also helps in terms of grant-seeking for almost anything else, because if you can show that you have a project that's prioritized in your plan, it does help getting state grants. I know towns have leveraged these into trying to get Mass Works grants, and, you know, pretty much the whole gamut of grant funding for this kind of action, you know, having this plan does help. The main thing is the FEMA funding.
Would FEMA funding possibly apply to something like repair or removal of the Wheeler Pond Dam?
It could. That is not something that they funded a lot. You'd have to demonstrate that there's a significant, you know, basically, there's a cost-benefit analysis that's a part of the FEMA application. And you have to demonstrate a very clear tie between the risk from the dam to what's downstream.
Okay.
It is generally eligible. They do change those eligibility factors every year with the PDM.
About that, it's a private dam also.
And that, that's another-
No, no, I understand. They're actually, although there had been an opportunity, and there probably still is one on the table for the town to acquire that, but we didn't acquire that until-
The state does have-
We had something we could do with it.
The state also has a couple of programs that relate to dams. The one side through the Division of Ecological Restoration, which relates to dam removal. I'm not sure if that's practical for the one you're speaking of, but there are occasionally funds available through the state for dam repairs as well.
Okay, all right.
So, at this point, I guess I would like to ask the board to vote to adopt the plan, if that's-
And I would ask for a motion to that effect?
Motion to adopt the hazard mitigation plan.
Second.
Any further comments or questions?
Yep.
All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Nice job, all of you.
Adam as well. Where are your pens, because that seems to have-
I probably took it.
Or, I took it, oh. Lisa took it.
No, this is my pen.
Yours is right over there.
Yes, but this is not that pen.
Oh, okay.
This is from my vet.
This is, all right.
So go ahead and argue with him.
All right, yeah. Well, I want to thank your vet for donating that to the town. Thanks. No, just not because I thought I'd-
This is an awesome pen, I love this pen.
All right, well, I won't take it, then. Do you guys have anything else you'd like to chat about?
I'm just here for executive session at the end to talk about the contract.
Oh, okay, cool.
If you'd like to catch both.
Late today, I left a letter for you.
It's at the end. It's the end of the package, if you want to take that out of order.
To be able to-
It's at the end of the approvals package?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Be able to apply for federal safer grant, the, at that, the Selectment's approval letter to support it, going forward.
One back, one back.
Yep.
Otherwise, the application's dead in the water.
Okay.
So that's something, that's something new, but, which is great. We have to attach a copy of your letter. We've only got, it came out the end of March, we only have a month, only have three days to fill out the application, and it's like starting from scratch every time, because now they've changed all the questions. I was going through it last Friday night and Saturday morning, and they've changed, can't cut and paste the old narratives. Now I get to create new ones.
I was only in the mailbox when I came in tonight to open up. Do you want to just let him maybe look at that letter and make sure it meets what you need to say, because it's changed from last year's language.
Did you, have you, you haven't had a chance to look at this?
No. His letter's attached, he drafted it.
Okay.
Basically, as long as it meets the guidelines of the highlighted area that they suggested. Just, basically, it needs the Selectmen to say that they'll support the grant through the grant period, which is three years. That's the three years that you get.
You want to take a quick look at that cover letter, see what you think? And I saw the emails concerning Roger Wheeler's funeral, and that work is being done. How much of a participation do you guys anticipate?
We're going to meet with the family tomorrow. It's just a tough time, because it's the first weekend of school vacation week.
Yeah.
So it makes, presents some challenges.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll get through it, though. We'll figure it out and make it work for them, and hopefully get them what they, as much as what they want as possible.
Yes.
All right, then. I would accept a motion to approve the letters, Selectment's letter in support of the federal safer grant. You want to indicate what the grant is going to be funding, just for people?
Sure. It's for a combination of full and per diem staffing, as we've discussed, trying to keep the call department viable and to keep the costs down. So they've changed, it used to be you could just only hire full-time staffing with it, but it can be full-time equivalent, so when you look at it, it's three full-time equivalent positions, and seven, 75% of it's paid, including benefits the first year, 75% of it's paid the second year, 35% the third year, and the fourth year is when you have to own.
Mm-hmm. So this would mitigate the costs of the existing plan that you've presented in budget, is that correct, rather than adding? You see what I'm saying?
No.
Okay.
We don't, we don't know that this won't be awarded till probably next fall.
No, no, I understand that. What I'm saying is, this would mitigate the costs of your ongoing plans, not to add to your ongoing plans.
Yes, yes.
I just thought it was impor-
Yes.
I actually understood that, but I wanted to make that point.
You said it legally.
Because, because I think, you know, people listening to it at home might think that this would result in our adding to our already existing plan, and then, of course, obviously, while it's a great deal in years one and two, and a pretty good deal in year three, you know, we do the, we pick up the tab in year four, so.
And in that time, there would be increased gain of less revenues, which would be allowed, so help to offset those costs as well.
Mm-hmm. But we have already budgeted for this plan, and so if this comes in, that this would simply reduce the amount that was coming out of the local taxpayers' pocket, and bring some other money that we paid in taxes home.
Correct.
Yep, okay. Any other comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, yeah. You're going to be around Wednesday, so we can follow up on the report we're talking about?
John's brought some information.
Perfect. Yeah, I'll email you guys tomorrow with a time, or maybe-
Later is better.
Later is better? Okay.
Yeah, because it's a trade show in the mornings.
Oh, no, that's, that's fine.
Hold on, let's see, what is-
Maybe around two, from 2:30 on, I think I'm pretty good.
Three o'clock?
So, three o'clock, sounds good to me.
Paul, before you leave?
Oh, yes.
Mary, did you send, by any chance, the email from Harold Naughton's office to any of the department heads?
Oh, asking, no, I, no, because I thought that it kind of glommed onto the Senator's request for, you know, budget priorities or what.
Not a lot of notice giving. The Harold Naughton's office wants to know by-
Like, today, yeah.
Today or tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I think.
It's like, but anyway, maybe-
They have money?
They, they might have money.
These are, these are what, for basically earmarks in the, in the annual budget, correct? Is that what he's looking for?
Yeah, it's things like, I talked to him, and like, stuff like the wellness trail would be a possibility, or that sort of thing.
Okay.
Okay. I just didn't know whether it was something any other departments might have needs that, you know, you might want to share. Anyway, maybe, maybe you could forward it to-
I can 40, so all the department heads at the board wants me to.
Is that, how is that good for you?
Yes, of course, that's fine with me.
All right. That was one of my questions for the saving.
Yeah, he did want dollar amounts, too, and I think it's got to be there by, what, Tuesday, Wednesday?
He said by, I think it was by close of business tomorrow.
Yeah.
But the email came Friday, so it was kind of last minute.
See, we'll take a look, and certainly-
All right.
Throw a dart. Thank you.
I'll think about your UTV.
Right.
It's already there.
All right, good. I figured it might be, but just in case. All right. All right, let's see, what else do we have here?
Just also number eight, it was a request to borrow the town flag for the funeral.
Okay, have we done everything else?
No.
We're on number four. Conservation.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just looking at it quickly. You don't mind, we'll plug through this. I don't think it's going to take too long, rather than go into executive session and rather than go into executive session and then pop back out. That's, that's what, that's all I was looking to see, how long this is gonna take. So, we did the minutes. All right, so, Conservation Commission, Land Management Plan, okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, we're being asked to, uh, endorse a land management plan, uh, attendant to Great Oak Farm. This is the land up on Highland Street that we have secured limited, uh, passive access to, but also development rights. And the Conservation Commission has endorsed this, correct?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. And, uh, has, have they voted on it?
It came over from Ashley. I'm not sure what the status is.
Well, Ashley is from Sudbury Valley Trustees.
Typically, she's very good at doing this in, in order.
If we don't have that, what I would like to do is I'd, I'd, I'd offer to execute it at this point.
Yeah.
And hold it pending acknowledgement that Conservation Commission has, um, approved it, only because, as I say, we've had, um, situations in which not all of those bases have been touched in the past.
So, Great Oak, um...
Great Oak Farm Land Management Plan. Okay, so with that caveat, okay, that authorized to sign it, but hold it up pending confirmation that Conservation Commission has, in fact, approved and approved this.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none. We'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you say aye?
Yep.
Okay. ATM preparation. People saw my quick blurb on the 1,000 to 5,000. Yep. I would just point out that, um, I actually checked it with the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and if, and I can mention this on the floor, if, or put it in the blurb further if you wish, if we were actually to apply the, um, uh, rate of inflation going back to 1950, which is where, you know, the benchmark that I could easily use for it, um, that $1,000 figure would be $10,300 and some odd dollars. So, actually, in increasing it from 1,000 to 5,000, we're actually only doing about half of the adjustment for inflation, so, you know, you could, you know, but I did think it was, it was good to let people know that, you know, the town voted this in, in, in 1951, when that figure was actually worth $10,000, you know, in today's money, so this is, you know, a relatively modest increase. Okay, so that was...
Sounds good.
That was all right?
Yeah.
Any other issues that we have?
The fire chief did a lot of typographical fixing on Article 30.
Okay, after you looked at it?
He, yeah, he, he adopted a lot of the changes I suggested.
Okay.
Article 33 might be...
Were there any things that you still, because I haven't had a chance to look at that, anything that you thought were...
No, he looks good on that article.
It looks good on that article, okay.
Article 33 might be pulled tomorrow night.
Which is which one?
Uh, planning board accessory buildings and structures, the solar energy systems.
And when do we have to have this into the, uh...
In perfect world, they wanted it to be signed tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we don't have the school's regionalization language yet.
They're trying to have a meeting on Wednesday morning, the ATR committee.
Oh, the annual town report committee?
Yeah.
Not the school?
No.
Okay.
I don't, school, you would have to tell.
I wonder why you knew?
No.
So, we don't have, we do not have a, um, okay. You know, I'm, I, I gotta say, I, I think we have, I think we really have to close this thing, and if somebody's not submitted something, we have nothing to put on the warrant. Never mind the fact this is an important decision, and if something got in the warrant today, even, there really is very, very little time for anybody to read it, understand it, and socialize it.
Oh, absolutely.
I hate to be, uh, I hate to be the skunk at a lawn party, but, you know, it, uh, it does strike me as though this doesn't belong on this year's annual town meeting warrant. I gotta say it.
I just, I know that they've done an awful lot of work. I'm not sure what the holdup is.
Yeah, but nobody has seen it, you know?
I have to say, the, it, the Town Management Study Committee has done way more public outreach, as far as I know, and I should know, than the schools have, which is very concerning when it, here, here it is, uh, you know, in the middle of April. Is there anything I can do as the school's liaison if, before we make this decision?
Well, I mean, I'd like to suggest that if they can have something on our desk, if we get this done by noon on Wednesday, if we get it in, and I will tell you that they aren't gonna get my support under any circumstances with this kind of last-minute nonsense, but if they can get it in, um, by noon on Wednesday, I would say, and, and if we can get it printed, if we can get it out on the close of business on Wednesday, could we check that? Do, do you think we can?
I, I can print it.
No, I meant get it to the printer and get it out.
I have no idea.
They want to get it to the printer by, I think, the 16th was the, the date for the printer.
And what day is that?
Monday.
Monday.
Patriots' Day, presuming that they're open, probably.
Yeah, then they probably want to get it there Friday.
They, yes, that is what Mary had originally said.
I, I think Wednesday's reasonable.
Okay, I would say Wednesday.
I would like to give them a heads up that they...
I would say like Wednesday at noon. Otherwise, I don't think it should be on there.
I can communicate that to them tonight by email.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I, you know, that's, that's only my opinion, so if anybody else feels otherwise, please speak up.
I think that's fine. I just didn't want to do it tonight. I wanted to make sure that before we did anything, they had a...
Yep.
Your, your...
And we, and really, just the fact that...
I think they're riding for a fall, the way they've done this. When they came in here before, the last time they came in here and talked, there was nothing about the major issues, nothing about the costs, nothing about the benefit to students. There was just a bunch of stuff about administrative convenience that was put together by a previous administration, and, you know, I just, I, I, I think they should punt.
Yeah.
But if they don't want to punt and they want to drop back against the rush, they can do that, you know? Anyway, so we'll give them until...
Wednesday.
Yeah, can we, uh, register that as, you know, a vote of the, uh, because I think we've all nodded our heads enough on that, okay? Fair enough?
Yeah.
All right, and so, uh, when will we know about dropping Article 33 out, did you say?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, okay, that's good. Yeah, I mean, I'd, if we're, if we're putting this in on Monday, I'm more comfortable giving people a little more time to drop something out, because you're just dropping it out, as opposed to putting it in, which regard, you know, which requires some editing, et cetera, so, but tomorrow night is great, so they will also let us know by Wednesday noon.
Right.
Okay.
Does the board want to come in later in the week to sign originals for a constable to hang?
The deadline for that will be?
I believe the actual deadline for that is a week before, so you could, in theory, do that next Tuesday, but whatever you are saying is going off into the press is gonna be the same thing.
Yeah.
Either way, that's probably not as critical as getting...
Yeah, no, I think, uh, we can, we can sign it next...
Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday. I don't know if people, um...
Everyone's here, next Tuesday.
Yeah, no, 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 no. I was just thinking whether, um, it's Monday, I was just thinking whether we wanted to pencil in the meeting in case there's some kind of emergency on Friday or something to close this out.
That is what Eloise was suggesting would be a good idea.
Okay. Okay. I think I can, I think I could do it at, say, 9:30 or 10 o'clock in the morning, um, but, uh, when we set a time, if you'd allow me to go home, and I'll, I'll confirm it as soon as I get home with my calendar at home, but I think, I think I'm okay until around 11:00 on Friday, so.
Shouldn't take long, correct?
To sign it? No, Joel's okay with it?
Yeah, have you talked with Joel at all?
I left messages for Joel, but, you know...
Yeah.
I'll rattle the case tomorrow again.
Tell him Friday we're, Friday's the deadline.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Then we have to post by what, Wednesday?
That'd be plenty.
Then we'd have to post by Wednesday.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if I...
Yeah.
If I go home, I'll let you know the schedule. We post tomorrow morning. We're, we're in good shape.
Printing deadlines, more orders.
Um, was that okay for you? That was okay? It was okay for you?
Yep.
All right, so, do, do you want to say, do 9:30 or 10:00?
10:00 sounds good to me.
Okay, 10:00 is, 10:00 is okay with me, too. All right, so let's do that. Any other things that we need to attend to with the ATM warrant tonight? Nope, okay. I mean, you and I went over, you know, a bunch of stuff last week, and it was looking pretty good. Okay.
You know what, what have I got? I got two pens here.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Sometimes...
Immediately come after me.
Sometimes the butler does it, you know? All right. Yeah, I'm sorry, I was accusing you. It just was a blue pen, and I didn't have my glasses on, so, all right.
Excuses, excuses.
Yeah.
Just as it were creeping along, it doesn't seem to be any need for a special town meeting warrant yet.
No.
That, just to show you on the calendar, it would be April 23rd would be the deadline for posting any such warrant, but it looks like the FinCom thinks that they can handle snow and ice with year-end transfers.
Mm-hmm.
So, maybe you won't, yeah, maybe you won't have to do that.
That was the only, that was the biggest concern, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we can, I, I think we can defer this to next week, and maybe I can talk to George about it, but I wanted to be sure everybody had seen, because I'm still waiting for outside counsel advice on this, the, uh, the report on, um...
From Susan Nadeel?
Yes.
Yeah, I did read that again.
Yes, I mean, it was, it was good, and there is certainly some degree of coverage.
Mm-hmm. I think it was just the issue with the, the, um, the personal vehicles.
Mm-hmm. Um, one of the things I wanted to ask today is, um, one can, um, ask for a rider that will provide, um, higher coverage for volunteers, uh, and they said that they could, uh, they could prepare a quote for us. Should we have, go ahead and do that to see what it is?
I don't think it hurts to get a quote.
Yeah, no, it doesn't. I mean, because, you know, that's just a, a data point, and, um, as we try to put this together, it might be, um, um, you know, it might, it might be a component of providing the service on an economical basis, because extra insurance might be less than, uh, having an employee, or...
Than we think, maybe?
Well, no, no, less than, certainly, yeah, than we think, or than, you know, than other alternatives, like having an employee do it, you know?
Right.
Okay.
I don't know if it's placed, um, placed according to the number of volunteers, assuming 10, assuming 15, assuming...
Why don't I chat with George to see, you know, an appropriate range, or, you know, two or three scenarios that he thinks makes sense?
It's at least 10, I think.
Yeah.
Because you have the Meals on Wheels folks and the bus drivers.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. And George has seen this, right, this is George's response, yes. Well, George knew more than I did, because I thought there was new information, and this is more detailed information, so, all right. Okay. All right, um, now, acting, um, as the personnel committee, we're almost done here, Mr. Galvin.
No, no rush.
We, um, uh, we will approve the recommended fiscal year at 19 individual pay rates. I did, um, talk with June about this last week. I was a little bit concerned, obviously, uh, FinCom has come with, uh, this year, which is sort of, which is unusual, uh, has come in with, uh, lower recommendations, which will likely prevail, because I don't think we're going to go to a two-thirds paper ballot vote on the town meeting floor for these things, and so my concern was that, uh, every, you know, this was not going to be used as what people were being paid and so on. I confirmed with June that she views this simply as the personnel recommendation, and that, um, in terms of recording actual pay, et cetera, um, that will be done on the basis of the, um, budgets that are approved on the town meeting floor. So, that was the last question I had, and why we, I held it up, uh, last, uh, last week. So, with that explanation, I'd ask for a vote to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a little tiny line, isn't it?
Yep.
I'm gonna start signing like you, Tom.
There you go. Okay, thank you. And the next item, also as personnel committee, um, was to, uh, confirm that the, um, job descriptions and grades that we had received from Molly, who is the principal assessor, had been approved by the Board of Assessors, and, um, Molly has confirmed that the Board of Assessors has, uh, agreed to that, um, and so therefore, this is just a follow-up from last week, and I think that was the only open question that we had, so, um, having answered that, I'd ask for a motion to approve the job description and positions.
Motion to approve the job description.
Second.
Okay. Any further comments or questions?
Nope.
All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty.
Do we, did we need to approve the advertisement, too, or...
Uh, well, I think, uh, if you, if you'd like, I mean, I'd...
That's part of my motion.
Okay. And that motion will include that, yes.
All right.
Okay. Next, um, we have a request from the Hayes Funeral Home, uh, which is handling Roger Wheeler's funeral for the use of the town flag. And I'm, uh, I mean, there are two town flags that I can think of, that, uh, one is the one that flies there, and then the other is this. Is this openable and so on? Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, I think they want, what they want to do is use this one...
Oh, just this one, the town flag for this.
Yeah, for a display in the casket.
Gotcha, okay, sorry. I was thinking about...
Yeah.
The one that's up there.
Yeah.
Yes. No, actually, the one that's up there. Uh, I certainly have no objection to that, um, you know, Roger served in many capacities, including, uh, Selectman and...
He did.
Fire chief, and, uh, in the 2nd Armored Division during the 2nd World War, so I think it's a worthy use of the flag, and I would accept a motion to authorize its use in his ceremony.
So moved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I think that completes the business that was on the agenda. Under new business, very quickly, we have had a request for the, um, building inspector to take on, um, a part-time, uh, part-time employment in Acton, uh, four days a week in the mornings to be, uh, just an, an inspector for them. Um, he's, uh, presented a schedule whereby he will be here for an hour or two first thing in the morning, and will be back here. the morning, and will be back here in the afternoons, and will expand evening hours, and I believe he understands that if, when we get engaged in this, it proves to be unwieldy or detrimental to his services here, we would expect him to resign from that position.
He was very clear that his first priority was Berlin.
Totally, yes. So, with, with that all in mind, I certainly don't have objection to that, and so I would, I would accept a motion to approve part-time.
With those stipulations.
Employment with those stipulations. I think we should put those together in a memo, and I'm willing to jot those down and have him, have him sign them, so.
So moved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? I know you've spoken to each of us separately, so, okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other new business to be brought before the board? All right. Any quick updates or comments, or anything of that sort?
I think I covered a few of them through the meeting.
Okay.
The Harold Norton thing, and.
And we talked, I was going to actually, before there was the flurry of emails about this, I was going to, I was going to mention that Supreme Judicial Court case, which is actually, I think, very helpful in terms of Forty Caves, Forty Caves, Berlin Caves. I wish it were Forty Caves. Anyway, but I think that was, that was, that was it, I mean, we met on Thursday, so not a huge amount has happened in between, except the weekend, so.
I did, 1870, Piper just got an email that that is not going to be open by the 27th. I was just wondering if there was an update on.
No, we are meeting on Wednesday.
Okay.
And I didn't get that email unless it came in late in the day.
Okay, it was sent to her because she has an event scheduled, and I was just wondering, because I was under the impression that it would be well open by the 27th.
As I say, we're having a meeting at 10 o'clock on Wednesday, when I thought we were going to get sort of a final update on that. I, I hadn't heard, and it may be an excess of caution.
Okay, it's freaking my kid out, so.
Well, yeah, welcome to that project.
It's freaking my kid out, so.
Yeah, I freaked out a couple times in the course of this, too, so.
So if you could.
Yeah, we will, we are, we are meeting at 10 o'clock.
Signs that point to 19 Carter, so.
Yes, I mean, we have to change.
Yeah.
Everything, she has to change all of her stuff, if she has to go to 19 Carter, she has to talk to Abby, like, really quick, so.
Well, you know, it's a day after tomorrow, 10 o'clock in the morning, and I will report to you guys as soon as that meeting's over.
Awesome.
All right?
Yep.
Okay.
And then I was also wondering.
It would surprise, it actually would surprise me if it couldn't be open by the 27th, but from what I've heard, but from the history of the project, it wouldn't surprise me at all.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, I just don't have anything to say.
Thank you.
All right.
And then we seem to get, like, notices from Hank and everybody else really sort of late, I was wondering if we wanted sort of an ongoing wish list, that when they asked for this stuff, we could just, like, say, here, we have all these things we would like to have, so maybe we could keep a wish list?
Yes, and actually, I would, if, I'm not going to have time tomorrow, because I'm going to be in Boston, but my thought was to put something on the wish list to finish, get it out there, to finish the sort of expanded parking area and the transition to the Bullard House, that we, you know, it's true, you know, because of budget shortages, that might be something to put out.
Only 1870 Town Hall project.
And I think we have figures for that, just, you're, you're talking about a wish list and stuff, we already had figures for, reminded me of that, because I think we already have figures for that, so I could send an email to the 1870 Town Hall to see if they could give us a figure and a brief description for that, but that's one thing that I can think of that.
True.
Yeah.
And then maybe going forward, we could just sort of.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
And then next year, we can just go here.
Mary, could you send that to all the departments that we talked about, saying?
Not just for tomorrow's deadline, but also in general.
Right, just in general, even so.
Yeah, and obviously, anything somebody submits tomorrow, we should put in a file, so that if it doesn't get done today, it'll be part of next year's wish list.
Right.
Be a calendar item that just kind of lingers around the.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, we could also use it for Senator Turin.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same, they have to, the budget has to come together at some point.
Well, maybe copy both legislators, then, when we get this compiled list tomorrow?
Yeah, why not? Okay, anything else? All right, I, my understanding is that we will be going into executive session to discuss union negotiations, is that correct? Please union negotiations?
Yeah.
Okay, and we will not be returning to open session thereafter.
Except to.
Except to adjourn.
Yep.
Now, we're going to sit here all night, I guess. Yeah, you got to do that ahead of time, because we don't do that.
So what do we need, aye, aye, aye?
Local.
Andrew, aye.
Kefi.
Waisaki, aye.
Yep. All right.